Yes, it is. I called order the City of Columbiana Council Meeting of October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. I'd like to ask Deanne to do the invocation and then we'll all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Lord, we thank you for the privilege to live in your presence and to work with you to build a better community. Help us to do right, to deal fairly with all of our citizens, and give us the faith and courage to put our trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deanne, may I call the roll?
Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Attilio?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
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 Hudson?
Here.
Thank you. Before we go to the minutes, I'd like to turn attention to President Council's Skip Liston. I want to introduce Ava to anybody that doesn't know her. She was part of our entrepreneurship class last year as a junior. And she just showed some excellent talents. So we've asked her if she would join council and get an idea of what council does, how they do it. And free to ask questions. If you have any questions or anything about what we're doing or how we're doing it or doing your discussions is fine. You know, from that standpoint, you're like a member of council, okay? This is Ava, everybody.
Aye.
Stan, Ted, Dick, Noel, Dick, McBane, you know Rick, I'm Skip, you know Dan, Amanda, and our attorney. Thanks for joining us, Ava. We're really excited to have you with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Good. Thank you. Okay, all of you received a copy of the minutes of the October fifth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Hearing none, they'll stand approved as presented. Reading of Communications, I don't believe we have any tonight, but we do have reports of commissions and boards. You received a copy of the September twenty-seventh Park Recreation and Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes. And also the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Are there any questions or comments on either one of those sets of minutes you received? A lot of good things happening with both of those committees, so we appreciate their work. Okay, they'll be entered into the record as submitted. At this point in the agenda, we had Eric Offenberg and Lana Wilt were going to be presenting, but they're not here.
No, I'm trying to get a hold of them right now, so they may be logging in too, I'm not sure.
Caught up in traffic?
Yeah, right. Dog ate my homework, I don't know.
Okay, let's turn to the managers' report.
Thanks, Mayor.
Did you make some progress on the West Salem Street?
What'd you do that for?
It is the Halloween season.
Yeah, we did make some progress on the West Salem Street. We did Stormwater Project. We did put a new traffic pattern on this week, and we hope to fully open the West Salem Street any day. Maybe open today. We do have to get back to the Pearl, North Pearl, and the Salem, West Salem Street project. At that intersection, the gas company's gonna come back and gonna be there again. But we are finally making progress. We're out of the Rock, and we passed a lot of the utilities. And appreciate everybody's patience for those that did lose water on Friday and Monday temporarily. We did hit a couple lines when we were putting in the storm line. On Saturday, the leaf bags were given out. I think this is like our fifth year in a row we're doing that. I think it went really well. And for those of you that did not get your leaf bags at Ace Hardware, you can stop at City Hall from eight to four-thirty. And there's a little locker right outside the pay window. I want to thank the fire department. It was all hands on deck. We had a huge grant writing party, if you will. We spent about three days. I think it was equivalent to about ninety hours. Just getting all the information for this grant, we did hire a grant writer, and they, you know, they need certain information. And it was all the firemen and the chief and Mike and my staff looking for all the data that they needed. And we got it in on time, so we'll see what the next step is, and hopefully we're successful in that. It's the first time we've ever done this bigger grant. It was a FEMA-type grant, and it was very laborious. And, you know, now that we've gotten the information, we might be able to reapply a little easier next year. But we had to look up some pretty strange facts in our service area, such as silos. We had to find out how many silos there are in town, so like in our 4408, anywhere that we service. So I know Jay Groner spent a lot of time on Google looking for silos, so that was just one thing that was kind of odd. But it was a nice team event, if you will. The dog park did clear that preparation for construction, looking at the contours and soil next. And R and B will be at the next park board meeting. I believe they have some plans that we're gonna look at, you know, for final consideration on that. But we knew we needed to clear the area, and this is time of the year before it gets too wet. So I think it's looking pretty good out there. Street Department, we are this week just finishing up on a little bit of paving that we had started. Monitoring the Stormwater Project, excuse me. Again, it's Water Department, wastewater in the street, been out there a lot. We appreciate them helping on that. Water Department, we did get a letter from the EPA about the recent visit. We got the hard copy, I believe it was yesterday or Friday, and we're gonna go down through that and address any issues that may have arisen there and work on those. The Water Department did have to repair some lines out there, as we referred to earlier. On the wastewater side, we have a new draft discharge permit. We're redoing that. We have thirty days to do that. We actually have a consultant helping us out on that, too. Park and Cemetery, we did meet for the park renovations, finishing up the mowing and diligently working on the Joy Christmas. I don't know how many years this is in a row that we've been doing this, but this is one of the best Octobers that we've seen that do it. But I actually looked back in our manager's report, they're back in twenty sixteen, and you can see where we, you know, started early on in those and, you know, emptying the trucks and getting out there and putting those up. And we're really looking forward to that this year. It'd be really nice. Electric Department, they did do some service hookups, continue to look at some settings at the substation. And with that, I believe that's everything I have there.
Thank you. Any questions for Lance? Okay, in your packets or electronically submitted to you, you should receive, you should have the mayor's court, mayor's court report, the building zoning report, and the EMS department report, all of September twenty twenty-one. Any questions or comments on those reports? Hearing none, we'll move, you also received a copy of the ten nineteen twenty-one bill list. Any questions on the bill list that you may have? Okay, again, hearing none, we'll move to old business. And I would like to ask, we can have a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Deanne, you call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-one dash oh dash three zero nine three, this is second reading. An ordinance, amending appropriation ordinance twenty dash oh dash three zero six nine by adding five hundred four thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars in the WWTP surplus fund and three hundred seventy-two thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars in the WWTP reserve fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second. Any questions on the motion? Deanne, please call the roll.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Okay, our guests still are not here, so, oh, okay. Yeah, we can go back. I see Eric is on. Eric, would you like to make your presentation at this time? He's sitting in the dark.
He's sitting in the dark.
Eric, can you hear me?
He's so muted.
You're muted, Eric.
You're muted.
He's frozen. It's getting chilly out there.
It's not that cold outside.
He's moving around. That's a good sign. You know, it's kind of apropos for Halloween.
You're supposed to be talking.
We can hear you.
I'll text him that we're gonna change.
Just having trouble hearing. Okay, you can hear me.
Yep, go for it.
Okay, I'm here from Columbiana Chamber of Commerce, and we are asking for permission to close down the street on November nineteenth. That's a Friday night, the typical day of the Columbiana Christmas parade. And we are excited to be back to normal this year with our Christmas parade. And the same route as usual, starting on Stanton, turning on West Salem, and then coming up Main Street to Pittsburgh. The time of the parade would be six o'clock. That's when it will start off. We will also have the tree lighting at six o'clock. And we welcome everyone to come if we are granted permission.
Any questions for Eric?
Having trouble hearing.
I just ask if there are any questions from the group here.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Sounds great. We're going back to normal procedure.
Absolutely, and we are excited that our grand marshals of the parade will be four of the original people that started the parade twenty-one years ago, the patriots of the parade, Mr. Paul Rantz, Jack Guy, Rosalie Kurtz, and Carol Cops.
That is fantastic.
That's nice, yeah.
That is fantastic. Those people have put in hours and hours and hours of time.
Absolutely, that's what we thought.
Yeah, that's great. Chief, are you aware of everything that's going on here? Eric, will you make sure you get with the chief and make sure that he's up to speed on what you need?
Absolutely. I'm sorry I'm not there in person, but we are setting up the haunted walk in Shaker Woods for this weekend.
Okay, well, thank you, Eric. Okay, any other questions? Do I hear a motion on this matter?
I'd like to move that we approve the Christmas parade on condition that Eric gets together with the police chief to establish the route and everything that needs to be done.
Second.
November seventeenth at sixteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, we have a second.
We have a second, I'm sorry. Okay, any questions or comments on the motion?
We're gonna light the tree at the same time the parade starts. Is that what I heard?
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments? Deanne, may I call the roll?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you so much.
At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to go into two executive sessions. The first is a discussion of collective bargaining matters, section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G four. And a second session, discussion of purchase of property, section one twenty-one point two-two, G two.
So moved.
There is a motion?
Second.
There is a second.
We're gonna do these two together, huh?
There will be, there will be business after the executive session, so we will come back and conduct business. Still conduct business after the executive session. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Deanne, you call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
We will be back. I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll, Deanne.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move to new business. On this agenda, motion to accept the contract between Ask Me Union and the city. Any comments?
I move that we... Yeah, I moved to accept.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to accept the contract between Ask Me and the city. Any questions or comments on the motion? Deanne, may I call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Okay, is there any comment from the public at this time? Does anyone want to say anything, either electronically or otherwise? Hearing no comments, I'll move to council comments. Are any council comments tonight? I'd just like to throw something out. With Ava now joining us, do we want to include her in the roll call? Just so that we know that attendance, in case we ever need that in the future?
I think we should make a note of it, but until this plan really starts to gel in form and we have a formal thing, I think we can just acknowledge that she's here, kind of like we did today. She is getting the agendas, so.
Okay, the only thing I was thinking is if we want to go back and try to do this again, the question may come up, say, well, what was the attendance like? Was it really, you know, was it sparse? So we should have something that says she was here ninety percent of the time or something like that. I'm just trying to head something off in case down the road we need it.
It could be noted that she was in attendance, but I don't think it would be proper to call her for roll call.
Okay.
Because she's not an elected member of council. You could open a can of worms that you're not intended to just like acknowledging that she's here makes pretty sense.
Okay, and that's really all I want to do, is just.
Sure.
Couple words in the minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, sure. Good comment. Any other comments anyone would like to make?
I just wanted to follow up with Eric. There is a haunted walk. Eric Offenberg mentioned the haunted walk. It's Friday and Saturday out at Shaker Woods. The chamber's throwing that. They are looking for volunteers. I don't have the exact start times, but you can just reach out to them, and I'm sure there'll be a story or two on that. Looks pretty fun, and they're out there right now, you know.
I saw something. I think it was, if you want to do it, of course, contact them, but Friday night is the practice run or the rehearsal.
I think Thursday's rehearsal.
No, I'm in it. I'm in it. And Friday, we only have two days, so it's Friday, Saturday.
Oh, then that must be Thursday.
Yeah.
The night before you do it.
Yeah, we'll probably have a walkthrough. It'll be a walkthrough, yeah, or practice for the person who wants to do it or whatever. Learn how to say boo. Yeah.
So we can see who can find Lance in the haunted walk.
That's right, yeah. Where's Waldo?
I would just like to comment that the Joy Christmas is coming up, which we just talked about, runs for a good period of time, and the Tourism Bureau is looking for volunteers to help out with either selling tickets or working in one of the event menus. And so I told them I would ask council, what a great chance for you to spend the night. It's a great night to do. I've done it for a number of years, and people are excited to be in town. They love it. Everybody's in a good mood, but for some don't want to pay, but we talk them into it. We get a couple of those every night. But if you do call the Tourism Bureau and sign up, you know, there's a lot of opportunity to do it. And I think it'd really be great if we had, you know, each of you and your spouses or whoever want to help out, one of the kids. It's a great experience, so that's my comment. Any other comments?
I just had one that we were contacted last week by a national reporter to follow up on the nicest place in America and a little, you know, story on Columbiana. So that's gonna be released probably Sunday, and I'll get it all out to you. We can't even get the paper that it's gonna be in, so it should be pretty interesting, and thanks for your patience for some of the people that were contacted and didn't get interviewed. But it should be pretty neat. It's a follow-up on a previous story.
And you're on the front page of the Business Journal, this is just recently.
Yes, that was a very nice article. Really, really happy that Business Journal's really taken interest in Columbiana and given us a lot of airtime, so. There was actually, Elwell Brewing was in that same one, so, yeah, we thank them and helping everybody from Mahoney County know what we're doing down here.
Any other comments?
I've got something that's not nearly as much fun, but I just, it kind of came up a couple weeks ago. We got a couple meetings ago or so, we got a letter from a citizen recommending a single hauler trash van, which I don't support in any way, shape, or form. But it did get me thinking that our trash haulers in town are pretty unregulated, and I know other communities around us have licensing or some form of controls built in. And I would, I think it would benefit us to look into licensing and putting some regulation in around the trash haulers, because I know I was sitting in my office today, I work from home and obviously, and I swear there were seven trash trucks that went through my neighborhood today. I know it wasn't that many, I'm being a little bit hyperbolic, but there were a lot of trash trucks that went, and I think it would be good to know how many were, how many companies are actually serving town, licensing them, and just put a little bit of a regulation in. It's not something we need to jump on. I think we can start talking about it around the first of the year or something after we get through all the other stuff that we're doing, but I think it would be nice, not nice, but beneficial to look into that a little bit.
I would agree with that a hundred percent, and I wouldn't be at all surprised if you didn't have seven trash trucks going through town. It just, it amazes me how many of them go up and down the street. Personally, I think going with a single trash hauler, you know, or maybe somehow divide it up into different sections of the city and give a contract to multiple people, but cutting down the number of trucks would greatly help reduce the number of potholes and everything else we see in town, because those trucks are big and heavy.
So definitely we could do some work on, like I say, it doesn't have to be, I know you're not busy with any of those, Lance, so it doesn't have to be anything we jump on, but it's something I would like to look at.
One more person that thinks it's a good idea, we could have a committee. Maybe three, so maybe we'll think about that next meeting.
Sure.
We'll discuss that. Okay, thanks, Deanne. Okay, thanks, Deanne.
Put him on.
Well, he likes to be.
And he likes to be president of things anyway.
Okay, next meeting, we'll see if we can formalize a group to work on that. Thank you, Deanne. Any other comments? Well, I could look for somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Meeting adjourned.